Great. Greetings. Now is the time and place for meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. If you would like to speak during the visitor portion of the agenda or provide testimony on the agenda item, please use the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press nine to alert the chair you would like to speak. For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which commission members are participating this evening. We have Commissioner Winter, Lawler, Ellis, Glenn Minkle on a call. Commissioner McCann is absent and excused. The visitor section of the agenda is an opportunity for members of the public to address the planning commission on a non-agenda issue or item. Anyone wishing to speak should indicate this to staff and wait for your name to be called. Does anyone wish to address the planning commission on a non-agenda issue? Okay, staff has indicated that they have no visitors for this section. So we will move on to the commission communication. Do any commissioners have any communication? Okay. Seeing none, and we are now at staff communication. Any communications from staff?
Yes, thank you, Chair and I. Anna Blotinsky, Planning Division Manager in the Community Development Department in Beaverton. A couple of newsy items. The city is in the heart of the budget process right now and is facing a pretty significant shortfall in the general fund. The city manager is working through this with the council. And there are some budget briefings scheduled for April 20th and 24th, which are open to the public. You can learn more about this on the Beaverton website at beavertonorgan.gov/budget. We also have a racial justice and identity series, which is going to take place in April and May that include a variety of workshops and activities. Check out the beavertonlibrary.org/whoareforthese. And I just want to note this does include a really cool, a really cool project called Our Cities, Our Stories that captures basically history of Beaverton narratives from folks who may not really have been represented in the kind of traditional histories of Beaverton. There's some great content in there. And then this week is actually Food Waste Prevention Week. And there are a variety of activities and informational pieces. And again, you can get some more information on this on the wonderful internet at foodwastepreventionweek.com. And that concludes my newsy items for today. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Great stuff. So with that, we can move on to the new business. The first item on the agenda is the application for the Appeal of the Organic Milk Exchange, case number APP2023-0001. The applicant has the burden of providing that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, comprehensive plan, and any applicable Beaverton code provision. The criteria that must be addressed in the appeal of the director's decision is reviewed under Beaverton Development Code Sections 50.65, Appeal of a Type II Decision, 50.80 through 50.83, Design Review II Approval Criteria identified in Sections 40.03.1 and 40.20.15.2. C. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards these approval criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the planning commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. State and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following questions will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte context, or site visits to declare? I'll start with Commissioner Winter.
Since this is about a four mile away from my house, I'm very familiar with the site. I did not necessarily take a specific site visit. I've been there multiple times in the last couple of months. I have had no contact with anybody.
Great. Commissioner McCann. Oh, Commissioner McCann is not here tonight. Commissioner Lawler.
I have no contact and no disclosures too. I haven't had any contact with anybody and I don't know the site. Thank you. I mean, I do know the site, but I haven't talked to anybody.
Commissioner Glenn Minkle.
I am familiar with the site but have no contact.
Okay, Commissioner Call.
I'm familiar with the site but no contact.
Okay, Commissioner Ellis.
My mother-in-law lives on Fifth Street, not too far from the site. So I have frequent but incidental exposure to the site, have been by it many, many times, but I don't believe I have any conflicts.
Okay, and I have no conflicts as well. Does any member of the audience wish to question the commissioner about ex parte contacts or site visits or challenge the right of the commissioner to participate in this hearing? Let the record show no response. The order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff will give a presentation followed by questions of staff from the commission. The applicant will then be given 20 minutes for its presentation, followed by the commission's questions of the applicant. Then, members of the public in support of the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Then, members of the public opposed to the application may speak up to five minutes each. And last, members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will then have five minutes to speak. After public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. The planning commission will then hear any final comments from staff. We'll now begin with the city staff presentation.
Just a second here. All right, greetings Chair and Commissioners. Mayor Harris, Senior Planner, City of Beaverton, Community Development Department. My presentation this evening is for an appeal of the Organic Milk Exchange Design Review II Approval. Tonight's appeal is Land Use Application APP2023-0001. The design review application being appealed is DR2022-0098. Here's a vicinity map of the site and surrounding area. The subject site is located on the southwest corner of Southwest Fifth Street and Southwest Western Avenue. The site's approximately 7.53 acres. This slide provides an overview of the proposal. The proposal is to redevelop an existing industrial site. Site improvements include a 5,910 square foot addition to an existing industrial building, improvements to landscaping and pedestrian circulation areas, and improvements to vehicle parking, maneuvering, and circulation areas. This slide shows the project's approved site plan. This slide outlines the appeal. The appellant is appealing Design Review Condition Number 24 in the Organic Milk Exchange Director's Decision. Appellant makes one assertion that staff erred in conditioning the issuance of the revised site plan permit prior to the issuance of the project's building permit as is required by Condition 24 in the Director's Decision. Staff concurs with the appellant's assertion that Condition 24 is inconsistent with agreements made between staff and the applicant prior to the Director's Decision publication. Staff recommends that the planning commission revise and move Director's Decision Condition 24 as shown in Exhibit APP2.2 to the staff memo to the planning commission that's dated April 5, 2023. This slide shows the proposed changes to the conditions of approval consistent with Exhibit APP2.2. And staff recommends that the planning commission approve APP2023-0001. And with that, staff is happy to answer any questions that you all might have. Thank you.
Great. Do any commissioners have questions of staff? Okay, seeing none. We can move on to the applicant's presentation. The applicant will now have 20 minutes to present, beginning by introducing yourself and stating your name and address for the record.
Yeah, hello, I'm Peter Graham with Scott Edwards Architecture. And I'll use our business address, 2525 East Burnside Street in Portland, 97214. I am unable to start my video. It says, oh, there we go. Excellent, thank you. Powers that be. Appreciate that. Check support. So I'm assuming that you all have had time to read through the memo that Aaron put together on the background of this request. I'm happy to review any of the details of that if anybody has any questions, but I guess following on Aaron's presentation, I guess I would add to that that we are, first of all, thank you for taking the time tonight to hear our request. We were thrilled to receive approval for all three of the land use applications that we submitted on the project. It sounds like you all are familiar with the site. You know, it's been under construction for some time now. There are multiple projects impacting that part of town. That's awesome and great. And so this request is really a kind of a procedural pragmatic request to allow the building permits to be issued independently of the revisions to the existing open site development permit. So we had during our review with staff, with the pending conditions of approval, we reviewed the kind of draft COAs and we kind of all agreed in principle that that made sense. And there was really no functional reason to condition the building permit on site permit issuance because, I mean typically for a new development, you would see that, but because really it was an existing open permit and it had been partially completed in 2019, they really had very different timelines. So just as a practical matter, site development staff concurred and transportation staff weighed in, concurred that, yeah, that makes sense, no problem whatsoever. And then when the public, when the staff report was issued, I think perhaps a clerical oversight, that condition remained. And so we reached out to staff who concurred, understood that you know, concurred that it was, it was, really didn't reflect the content of our discussions with the staff and that because it had been issued publicly, really the only way to correct that for the record would be to bring this to the commission tonight. So that's really our kind of the synopsis of why we're here tonight. I would just maybe add one more point for the commission, which is to say, all, this request doesn't affect any other conditions of approval for the project. We are fully on board to comply with all conditions of approval. Really appreciate staff's time and effort to develop a comprehensive list of requirements that are consistent with, you know, the needs of the project and also the needs of the public interest and so forth. And it was a well-crafted report. And so I just wanted to go on the record and say that, you know, this is really just essentially a procedural request on our part. So I think that's about all I have to say at the outset, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Great, thank you. Do any commissioners have questions? Okay. We're letting you off easy tonight. If there are no commission questions, we will move on to public testimony. Now is the public testimony portion of the meeting. We will call for test, I don't think we have enough people to call in groups. Staff, so for those viewing Zoom webinar, please communicate by using your raised hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press nine to alert the chair you would like to speak. Staff has stated that we do not have any public testimony this evening for this item. So with that, we do not need applicant rebuttal. Staff, any final comments?
No final comments, thank you.
Okay. Well, with that, I will close the public hearing. And as standard procedure, I'll randomly poll commissioners to state their conclusion on the application. I will start with Commissioner Lawler.
Well, I must say normally when I see an appeal of a decision, I start thinking that there might be some issues that I need to be concerned about, but in this case, it seems like all parties agree with the changes. And so I'm really enthusiastic about this site. I was kind of sad to see that nothing has been progressing, but now in the last few months, I have seen some progress and it syndicates to me that it's still a live project. And I think it's wonderful and happily anticipating a vote to affirm should allow this appeal to continue and revise those conditions.
And Commissioner Call. Commissioner.
Hello.
Hello.
Yeah, I agree and it's an exciting project. I think it's great. I approve.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yeah, similar feedback. Reading through the materials, it seemed relatively straightforward that it was a procedural or administrative change in nature. And good to hear agreement from staff and from the other folks. In this layperson's point of view, it seemed pretty straightforward. So no, no major questions for me.
Great. Commissioner Glenn Minkle.
Basically same opinion. I think it's exciting to see that project get going. And it was obviously just an oversight that we're trying to correct. So I agree with staff that we should move it forward. No issues.
Great. Commissioner Winter.
From a procedural standpoint, seems to make sense. From a personal standpoint, I was, because I go by this site practically every day, I was, I've been waiting to see what was going to happen with it. I'm a little disappointed the retail aspect is gone by the wayside and it's going to turn into a distribution center, but that's life.
Great. Okay, and I agree with my fellow commissioners. And I appreciate the applicant's willingness to go through this process. So with that, Commissioner Lawler, would you like to make a motion?
I will attempt at a motion. I move that we approve case file APP number 2023-0001, subject to the findings in the staff report dated April 5, 2023, and the revised conditions of approval found in the record specifically Exhibit APP2.2.
Okay. Staff, does that sound okay for our motion? No respect.
That sounded fine to me. Robin, did you want to chime in?
Oh, I was just, I wanted to confirm, is that the correct exhibit number for your staff report, Aaron? AP, what was it, APP?
I believe the commissioner was referencing the exhibit that identifies the revised conditions of approval.
Okay.
It's on our agenda.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to confirm that that was the correct reference.
Okay, so with that, do we have a second on the motion?
I will second it.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Glenn Minkle. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I will do a vote by roll call. Commissioner Winter.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawler.
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis.
Aye.
Commissioner Call.
Aye.
Commissioner Glenn Minkle.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so the motion passes unanimously. The planning commission's decision will be memorialized in land use orders that were provided to all parties that provided oral and written testimony. If you would like to appeal the decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Beaverton Development Code and Land Use Order and the rules of the Land Use Board of Appeals. So with that, we will move on to our second agenda item, which is the work session for the Housing Beaverton Project.
Thank you, commissioners. Sorry, just want to say thanks again. Appreciate it. Appreciate the support.
Thanks. So the order of the work session tonight will be as follows. We will begin with the city staff presentation, followed by discussions and questions of the staff by the communication, by the commission. The commission will then hear public comments regarding the work session items. Individual comments will be limited to five minutes. Members of the public can view the meeting by clicking the link in the Planning Commission Agenda Webpage or by using Webinar ID 1617637242, passcode 999999. If you would like to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda, please use your raised hand feature in the Zoom menu bar. If calling in using the 669-254-5252 number, press nine to alert the chair you would like to speak. Once called on by the chair, please ask to un, you will be asked to unmute and speak to the commission. The commission may ask follow-up questions of individuals providing comments to staff. We will now begin with staff presentation.
One moment while I share my screen. Okay. So good evening Chair and I and commissioners. My name is Jenna Hughes. I'm an Associate Planner in the Community Development Department. I'm also joined tonight by Javier Mena, Affordable Housing Manager, who was also involved in this project. And I'm here to give you all an update about the Housing Beaverton Project and get your feedback on the Housing Needs Analysis and Housing Production Strategy Reports. The drafts have been included in your packet. So the purpose of this project is to plan for Beaverton's future housing for the next 20 years and identify strategies to ensure we're meeting everyone's housing needs as well as address current housing disparities. In Phase 1, the Housing Needs Analysis, we determined what the current and future housing needs are for Beaverton residents. Phase 2, the Housing Production Strategy determines what steps the city will take to make sure we provide needed housing. We are almost at the end of this phase and will soon be finalizing these reports later this spring. Our Housing Needs Analysis found that by 2042, Beaverton's population will grow by 19,000 more people, which means we'll need just over 9,000 more homes in order to meet this need. While everyone needs housing, certain groups have an especially hard time accessing the housing they need, such as low-income households, households of color, seniors, people with disabilities, and people experiencing homelessness. So we need to make sure we have housing strategies that meet the specific needs of these groups. More details are included in the Draft Housing Needs Analysis Report included in your materials. We also received feedback on We also received feedback on the potential housing strategies from uh, our Housing Technical Advisory Group, BCCI. The Inclusive Housing Cohort and the General Public. These are some of the key themes we heard from the, those conversations. They range from uh, allowing micro shelters and sleeping pods, renter protections. More education around housing, more homes for larger households and homeownership opportunities. Preserving existing low-cost housing, uh, accessible for senior housing. And partnering with home builders as well as concentrating more housing near services. Working with our consultant team led by APG, MIG, we conducted a round of interviews with developers. In general, developers are in favor of increasing development flexibility and capacity, especially in multi-dwelling and mixed-use districts. They are also in favor of permit-ready plan sets for middle housing and ADUs. As well as incentives incentivizing as opposed to requiring. Accessibility or or multi-generational housing. Middle housing and multi-dwelling developers have advocated uh, also for tax exemption programs. And um, construction excise tax is a topic that uh, we heard could deter some developers. But affordable housing providers were very much in support of this strategy. We then presented the draft housing strategies to City Council in February. And these were some of the council's top housing priorities. There is definitely a lot of overlap with the identified community priorities. But a couple of specific things that were brought up include uh, different ways to fund affordable housing. Besides the construction excise tax, also establishing a housing development fund and also regulating short-term rentals. So the last time we shared the list of potential housing strategies that the city could implement, we've since revised that list. Based on feedback and organized into these five categories. Uh, zoning and code changes to allow for more housing types and density. Two, reducing regulatory im- impediments to make uh, development more feasible. Three, financial resources to help fund affordable housing. Four, tax exemption to incentivize certain types of housing development. And land acquisition, lease and partnerships. Based on council direction, we also proposed estimated timeframes for implementation of the strategies. These are some of the strategies the city is considering in the next five years. These are included in the larger package of housing production strategies included in your packet. This is not an all-inclusive list by any means. This is more of a summary. And um, just want to note that further analysis and resources are needed. To determine whether these are implemented in this timeframe. As Anna mentioned earlier, we are facing budget constraints. So well, uh, the city will, will need to decide, you know, what we need to prioritize in the near term. So that being said, some items that are currently in the queue include uh, removing minimum parking requirements. The uh, moving forward with the Cooper Mountain Community Plan, which will promote and require a mix of housing types. Increasing engagement with various community groups. And establishing a construction excise tax to help fund affordable housing. In the three-to-five-year timeframe. We uh, strategies include allowing single-room occupancy housing and other types of low-cost housing. Through development code updates, increasing development flexibility for market rate and affordable housing. Promoting accessible and multi-generational housing, again through um, potential code incentives or requirements. Establishing a housing development fund for affordable housing. Exploring multiple-unit property tax exemption uh, to help incentivize mixed-income housing. And partnering with home builders such as Habitat to create more affordable homeownership op- uh, options. And um, also looking at the impact of short-term rentals on the overall housing. Supply and possibly creating regulations. So in terms of next steps, we have a council work session next week on April eighteenth. Where we will be discussing the revised housing strategies and timeline. As well as the Housing Needs Analysis Report. We'll then be finalizing the Housing Needs Analysis and Housing Production Strategy and we'll be sharing those documents with the state in May. And then we'll go through uh, a public hearings process to adopt the Housing Needs Analysis. Tentatively June fourteenth for Planning Commission. And since the Housing Production Strategy is not a land use decision. That will be adopted by resolution by City Council tentatively in the September timeframe. So that concludes staff presentation. The questions I have for discussion are. One, do you have any comments or questions about the Housing Needs Analysis document? Two, do you all have any questions or comments regarding the near-term or medium-term strategies? And do you have any other comments or questions about the Housing Production Strategy document? Thank you.
Okay, um, do any commissioners want to start? Commissioner Winter, thank you.
Jenna, could you go back to slide eight, please? So I have a couple of questions. First one. Doesn't necessarily have anything to do with slide eight, but I don't see. Tiny houses on this. Is that because they're too trendy? Or what's, I know that I believe the city of Portland has a tiny house pod that they just put into. Service recently. But what's the city's? Temperature on tiny houses as a housing alternative?
Yeah, great question. That is um, part of the low-cost housing for the first bullet point in the. Medium-term strategy list. It's more of a summary, but that does include looking at types of micro housing. Tiny homes, sleeping pods as a, as a, an alternative housing type.
Okay, can you um? I mean, single-room occupancy, isn't that just a roommate situation? I don't understand how that differentiates from a roommate situation.
It's a little more like, similar to sort of student dorm housing. Typically, it's a kind of like apartments, but the units themselves. May just have a bedroom and maybe a bathroom. The kitchen facilities are more. Uh, kitchen and living facilities tend to be more shared spaces. So we don't currently um, have those as a permitted use in our development code.
Are you saying something like a motel that has a bunch of rooms like Gresham tried to put in place here? Couple of weeks ago and then pulled the plug on it? Because I, I mean, I could single-room occupancy where it's separate bedrooms and shared kitchen and living is pretty much what a. What I think of, when I think of a big house with a bunch of bedrooms and roommates. Kind of like college.
Councilor Winter, just to give you an idea, Javier Mena from uh, CEO Beaverton, uh, for housing manager. It it really, in in a single-room occupancy, really falls in whole gamut from certainly uh, shared. House in terms of many rooms in a house and and that's one, but also into a multifamily. And some of it is this kind of high-level type of, they used to call uh, APODs. Part, various small apartments for college students. Um, they have a lot of that development in Seattle. That um, allows for a uh, lower uh. Entry into rental uh, housing, but it creates a lot of density. Uh, so it's, it's exploring the whole gamut of of what that could look like.
And one, this is my last comment question. What? What type of regulations on short-term rentals are we talking? I'm not sure what, how, how that's gonna help housing strategies?
Yeah, um, thank you for that question. It, the, the strategy itself would be analyzing whether. The amount of short-term rentals in Beaverton is a problem in Beaverton and having an impact in terms of taking away. Housing that could have been used for longer-term rental housing. Um, so, yeah, it would be exploring the various options in which we don't currently um. Enforce or, or having, short-term rentals are not currently allowed. Through our development code. But we know they exist. We just don't have a way of really tracking them. Or we don't have real regulations around them. So it'd be exploring that.
When you say they're not allowed. Are you talking, I'm, I'm, I'm not. Not clear on what a short-term rental regulation would be.
I'm gonna go ahead and jump in on this one, honest Lutinsky, playing division manager. Um, Commissioner Winter, we have, the, the Beaverton Development Code does not regulate short-term rentals on purpose. We don't have a definition of short-term rentals. We haven't ever intentionally created regulations for short-term rentals. As a result, they fall under the rules basically for hotels and boarding and rooming houses. Which are not really intended to regulate short-term rentals. So uh, boarding houses and hotels are are not actually allowed in most residential zoning districts in the city. Um, and they are allowed in some, but you need a conditional use permit. So i- it, it's basically a bad fit. We, we don't, we don't have a policy around short-term rentals and we don't have rules. That are intended to regulate short-term rentals. And as Jenna said, we don't, we don't do, we don't have a clear way of actually um, uh, tracking them. Um, if you do search on the short-term rental companies like Airbnb or V-Bureau, there are Beaverton locations that will come up. But they don't come up in a way that you can actually count them or figure out where they are. Um, so we don't really understand very much about how short-term rentals are currently operating in the city. They have been regulated in other places, in some cities, particularly those that have a lot of tourism. Um, a dynamic can emerge where short-term rentals will um, basically push out. Long-term housing for residents. Um, and really distort the housing market in favor of these short-term rentals. We don't think that that is necessarily happening in Beaverton, but we haven't actually had an opportunity to um, study it. Or have conversations with the community about um, about what the desire is. In terms of, in terms of the city's policy around short-term rental regulation. So um, we. This is not identified as something that is like a red-hot priority for addressing housing needs because we don't know that it would necessarily have a big impact. But we also know that um, we won't really know unless we have an opportunity to study it. And there's probably benefit to regulating short-term rentals, um, person to city policy that's developed deliberately. Rather than the kind of accidental ad hoc regulation that isn't really workable that we have now. That is a long-winded answer, but I hope it addressed your question.
Well, you did touch. Or of, I know that there are some municipalities that are concerned with Airbnbs pushing out rentals. So that's, that's the, the model, I guess, then I understand. I'm done. Thank you.
I, I also just have a follow-up question on that. This plan include like rent to own type of projects. Where like new families or first-time home buyers can get into like renting and then buying that home? Would that be part of the project?
Um, just to clarify, Commissioner, uh, are you asking if that's part of the uh, regulate short-term rental strategy?
Oh, no, I mean.
Oh, just part of the package of. Um. Javier can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not aware of a specific strategy that gets at that. I know um, promoting homeownership in general is, is one of the strategies, but um. I'm. I don't think at the top of my head that we've um, identified the rent-to-own model as a specific strategy. That the city intends to um. Uh, implement in the near term or medium term.
Thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Ellis.
Yeah, thanks. Um, maybe a, a couple of questions. On the excise tax, uh, there, the bottom bullet point on the near-term section. I- is there data or studies, you know, maybe not locally, but is there anything that actually says that those would dissuade developers from building?
Well, we did actually ask um, our consultant to do some follow-up research on this. So I'd be happy to share um, the, some of the research that they presented with us. I, uh, Javier, do you, do you remember if um, there was something specific about? Deterring development?
On that briefing, I don't recall anything uh, referring to um. The tax, detering uh, specific developers from, from moving forward. It does talk about increasing costs for sure. And just anecdotally, City of Tiger. Established a construction excise tax back in two thousand nineteen. And um, based on conversations with them and what that has generated really has that from what they're seeing. Perspective deterred continued uh, development in the city.
Gotcha. Yeah, what, on the, one of the previous slides mentioned that some of the feedback fears were that that would deter development. And that just set off a BS alarm in my head, like, have the rate that houses go for in this area and the vacancy rates of. That are non-existent, basically. Yeah, that's not gonna deter anybody. And, and if, if anything else, it really probably should be a progressive excise tax. That attacks larger, larger homes and real estate setups um, more aggressively than it does smaller ones. Or, or less expensive ones um, to actually service what we really need. Okay, cool. And then the second question, uh, uh, we've mentioned a couple of times today, the budget shortfall in the city of Beaverton. Obviously, at the end of the day, it's always amazing what you can saw with cash. So uh, how, how many of these initiatives? Will either be threatened by or, or support us in plugging the gap on the budget shortfall?
I'm gonna go ahead and take that one, honest Lutinsky, planning division manager. The tricky thing about budgets is that there's budgets that the city spends just as cash, right? So um, in the past, the city has provided direct support to um, to long-term housing development, for example. But we also provide support in the term, in, in the form of staff work and staff time. And so um, when we're looking at a constrained environment, some of these would simply be accomplished by staff doing research, developing options. Conducting public engagement, presenting options for decision-makers, um, making the regulatory changes. But staff time actually does equal dollars when it comes to the city budget. So in looking at a constrained. Concerned resources, we have to recognize that um. That the amount of work that we can do, even if it's just simply staff, might be constrained in a tight budget situation. So um, so I, I think when it comes to priorit- prioritizing, what we want to do is um, understand. Which of these housing production strategies um, will have the biggest impact? Um, sometimes um, removing a regulatory impediment can have a big impact. Um, sometimes removing regulatory impediment eh, won't necessarily do a ton. Um, and so that's why we have. Um, and so that's why we have, we have people like Javier involved. That's why we have, um, we have conversations with community members. It's why the consultants on this particular project, um, did a lot of, did a lot of background work, talking to developers, talking to affordable housing development community, um, to kind of understand what some of the most promising strategies could be. Um, and then also it will come down to things that council establishes as a priority. So it's, it's, it's one of those, um, um, one of those things where, um, the, the most, um, the best, um, the best strategy in terms of what we do first. That, that question might have different answers, um, depending on the circumstances over the next few years. So the timeframe that's associated with the housing production strategy has kind of ranges for when the city would target, um, pursuing some of these strategies rather than really concrete, number one, number two, number three. We'll do this for sure in this order kind of approach. We, we do want to keep it somewhat flexible so we can take advantage of different opportunities in terms of staff resources, in terms of funding from partners. Um, and also because we know we'll be learning more as time goes on, um, about what might be the most, the most helpful. I do want to mention one more thing, and Jenna, I, I can't remember if you mentioned this in the presentation. But the, um, Oregon Legislature is in its long session this year and there, there's a lot of legislation that's under consideration and being drafted and revised that does address housing. And so we do expect there to be legislation, um, that is adopted. Some of it has already been adopted that will, um, affect how cities approach regulating housing, um, in particular reviewing the development process of housing. And also how the housing strategies are implemented by different jurisdictions once they're created. So once the legislative, when, once the legislature is done for the year, we'll be able to kind of take a look around, um, look at our strategies that have been drafted and then potentially make some adjustments to these strategies based on what the legislature did approve, um, during their process. They might take care of some things for us at the state level by saying, you must do this. Um, in which case we may not have to change our code. Although usually those mandates result in us having to change our code and one way or another. But, but there may also be things that, um, that kind of rise up in the level of prominence um, and priority based on what happens at the state this year. So we don't actually plan to take forward the housing strategies for council to adopt until after the legislative session is over so that we, so that we can incorporate what the state does, um, into the strategies and not conflict with them.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. That was really comprehensive. And then my, my last question, uh, in a previous, uh, work session meeting, um, I'm imagining the slide in my head that was on screen, but there was, um, a talk about the available land to build. And the, I believe the comment at the time was that there's, there's actually a fair amount of lots or, or open land that are, that are either available or are currently zoned correctly and could be made available. And there was a wonderful, uh, battleship board across the city of all these small lots open and available. From a developer point of view or, or trying to entice people to build, is, is that kind of pockmarked target area the right approach? Or should we be more aggressive about looking for larger swaths of land and potentially, you know, larger campaigns around pushing the boundaries out and, and looking for more open land that can be built on significant numbers of units all at once?
I, I want Jenna and Javier to have a chance to respond, but, um, what I would say is that we need to be pursuing all options. And you can, you can get a lot of housing, um, with development of new large areas like Cooper Mountain. You know, we're targeting five thousand units in that area. That said, there's, there's very little existing infrastructure. So the amount of investment that has to happen in order to get that property ready for development is pretty significant. Um, so there are pros and cons when it comes to adding new urban areas. It can result in a lot of significant new housing. But it also takes a lot of time and money in order to create that readiness, um, on the infrastructure side where that housing to be built, whereas infill, sometimes there need to be infrastructure upgrades on a smaller scale. But for the most part, they've, they've got streets, they've kind of, they've got the basics available. And so that kind of incremental development might be a little bit less shock and awe. But it's a really important way for housing supply to be increased in the city.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I would say, just to follow on that is we need housing, right? And, and any type of housing, whether it is, uh, all redevelopment of, of a large swath of, of land or infill housing or anything in between. Uh, and because the more housing definitely then allows us to create more, uh, different programs for affordability issues as well.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Do any other commissioners have comments or questions? Commissioner Lawler.
I guess I have a, a couple of thoughts of things that haven't been mentioned thus far. And I'm thinking about, um, I think I've read a couple of places in the, the many numerous reports that there are because, you know, concerns about displacing people. And they mentioned specifically central Beaverton and I think southeast Beaverton. And it seemed to me that maybe, um, there could be an initiative, another initiative with other funding sources potentially contributing to it for, um, basically support of, to raise the level of substandard housing, basically taking existing housing. And if somebody needs a new roof or something like that, you know, having some sort of, uh, city program to support that kind of redevelopment. In other words, maintaining the housing that is in a great location as far as transit and, and access to a lot of our employment areas and ensuring that that housing remains viable into the future. And possibly even, um, considering some kind of a program to help, you know, because we do have a surplus of single family homes. Again, uh, targeting that, the, uh, the niche that would be not new housing, but maybe adding additions on to existing houses. And again, supporting, uh, homeowners or landowners that may be interested in that kind of micro development of new housing in existing neighborhoods. So that was one thought. I didn't know how that quite fit into any of these categories here, but I think it could probably fit it in a And then another thought I had was, um, this is sort of on the, the guise, under the guise of regulatory impediments. I like the idea that was mentioned about having kind of plans that are, you could pull off the shelf and, and make it easy on a developer because it had already been kind of pre-reviewed by, um, the, uh, the building plans review folks. And I thought it might be nice to have to incorporate some climate action strategies in that too, by having, um, like passive solar uh, kind of does would then reduce the utility costs that also factor for and so try to incorporate some climate action, um, strategies into the housing design for folks to use. So those are a couple of thoughts.
Thanks.
Councilor Lawler, um, one, just to follow up on your, your repair, um, idea. We do have a program, it's mostly for low income homeowners, uh, where we do, uh, emergency repair. One of the things that we have tried to do, and if there's not ever an option of a, uh, anybody in, in, in the commission to, um, assistance is, uh, would be great, is, um, identify property owners that have multifamily housing that may need some assistance in repair, that they, they, they charge affordable rents, but the, they, you know, the, the may need some TLC on the property itself, uh, that we would love to, well, talk to them and talk about how can the city help and, and maintain the rents as they are. And so because we know that there's always a, a challenge and a risk of those properties being sold and then a residence being, um, uh, asked to move so that they can paint it and, and rent those properties at a higher rate.
Great. And I also think about properties that may be in flood prone areas. And then that's a climate change that may occur where something that was just maybe on a floodplain fringe may now found it, find itself in more flood prone zones because of the change in our climate. And so those may be areas where, again, I think mapping may be able to target those areas that, and with, you know, contacting landowners that may need assistance to protect their homes from flooding is another thought I had. Kind of a, uh, follow up to your comment.
Great. Thanks, Commissioner Glenn Michael.
Uh, yes, so I'm not sure if, um, kind of reordering or re-clustering these kind of, um, action items is on the table. But I would love to see something moved into the one to two year category that's a little bit more tangible. So thinking about, again, the budget shortfall and the cost that it takes to have staff do research and outreach and do studies is all important, but I would love to see something tangible like moving the, um, the plan sets that are permit ready, move that into the category for one to two years so that there's something immediate that developers can access to start creating housing right away rather than waiting, you know, until year six to have something like that available. And anything we can do to remove barriers for development, to ease the process and the timeline of going through the permitting process. I think that, those are things that are actually tangible that, uh, developer will benefit from and actually build housing in the short term. So I would love to see something like that in the, in the near term. Because all of these items, other than the parking, which I've expressed before, I'm, I'm not in favor of removing all parking. Um, but the other three items are research and I'd love to see something a little more tangible in those, in that near term timeline.
Thank you. Yeah, kind of following up on that comment, it lines right into what my question to Jenna and Javier would be, which is, is there, if there was one item to move from the three to five year, do they have a top pick? Move it over to the one to two years.
That's for you all to tell us. I mean, we kind of already did that with the construction excise tax was in the three to five year. And we recently decided to put that into the one to two year category as something that, um, we hope city council will prioritize, um, in the near term. But Javier, I don't know if you had anything else to add.
You know, in all honesty, i- i- in, one of the things about this plan is that the strategies are very fluid. So if there's an opportunity to move one to a more immediate, because all of a sudden we have capacity, we can. Because all of them are important. You know, and so, but we have to also be realistic in what we say in terms of what we can do right now based on current, um, capacities. And so, um, but just because it says three to five years doesn't mean that if there's an opportunity to move ahead with that, we won't.
So if, um, if somebody bought one of the local hotels and wanted to turn it into an SRO, can they do that currently with our code?
So that's in, in a way, the way our code handles short term rental, sorry, the way our, our code handles SROs is kind of similar to the short term rental, which is, it doesn't prohibit short, it doesn't prohibit SROs. But they don't really fall clearly into any of the housing buckets that we have. So it's really, it's really more, it would be more a project of figuring out how to define them. And then, and then what makes sense for where and how they be provided. SROs is, by the way, one of the things that the state is looking at at this legislative session. So we very well may have, um, mandates from the state that will address SROs. Um, I'm not sure, uh, which version is going to survive the legislative process. Sometimes it's really unpredictable, um, where legislation kind of ends up. And it, it may be that we end up, um, responding to what the state does um, and kind of working around it. But I wouldn't want to actually make predictions right now about exactly how that would fall.
Commissioner Ellis, did you have more comments?
Yeah, apologies. Oh, just following up on the two, two quick things. So one on the SROs, just to, uh, and I'm sure y'all know this, of course, but the insofar as the target population are folks who are maybe lower income and have a high barrier for entry to get a house, obviously SROs can be a solution. Another way to think about them is that there are markets, and I have no idea Beaverton is, is the right market for this, but there are markets out there that do SROs for middle to higher income people as well. And that is much more of the, um, you know, picture like a swanky dorm or something like that. And the, the target on that is, is generally younger, single folks, um, who have either jobs that keep them, uh, tech technologically tied. And so they're most concerned about having, you know, high bandwidth internet connections and stuff like that. But they would benefit from a shared kitchen because they probably won't use it a ton anyway, and, and those kinds of things. So, yes, like the target market makes sense, but if, if we expanded the option to more than just low income, there's, there's just, that's additional density that could be added. So that's a thought. And then in expanding on the permits, the, the pre-permitted plans, um, idea, I, I love that. And I would say that an additional angle, if it was married with having faster conversations about short term rentals, um, is, is there is an option for folks who, who are looking to build and are wondering about things like ADUs for the purpose of short term rentals. And if there was some sort of, um, you know, part, partnership between pre-permitted plans that are inclusive of permitting an ADU for the purpose of short term rental that could encourage people to build because they would, there'd still be a primary home or a primary residence on the, on the property. And that could even go so far as to partner with, um, City Beaverton Business Licensing. I'm picturing if people wanted to, uh, build small structures for uh, work that they're doing out of home, um, to, to support their work, like that's an option as well to, to kind of goose that program as well. And I know that those are getting away from the target markets of helping to serve lower income folks. But in terms of getting people involved and just adding to the tax base, those are your thoughts that I had.
Thank you. Any last comments from commissioners? Or questions from staff? If not, we can move on to the public testimony. So we're now to the public, um, comment on the work session. How much will be limited to five minutes? For those viewing Zoom webinar, please communicate using your raised hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press nine to alert the chair you would like to speak. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak? I'm not seeing any hands raised, I don't think. Nope. Okay. Let, okay, the staff has confirmed to no call in, so let the, uh, let the record state show there's no request for comment. So does staff have any final comments for the city attorney?
Uh, no, thank you all for your, for your feedback.
Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney, I have no further comments.
Okay, great. Well, with that, we can move on to the third item on the agenda, which is the work session for the Loop Complete Street Plan. The order of the work session tonight will be similar to the last. We will work, we will begin with city staff presentation, followed by discussion and questions of staff from the commission. The planning commission will then hear public comments regarding the work session item. Individual comments will be limited to five minutes. Members of the public can view the meeting by clicking the link in the planning commission agenda webinar page or webpage or using webinar ID one, six, one, seven, six, three, seven, two, four, two, passcode nine, 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 nine. If you'd like to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda, please use the raised hand feature in the Zoom menu bar. If calling you using the six, six, nine, two, five, four, five, two, five, two number, press nine to alert the chair you would like to speak. Once called on by the chair, you will be asked to unmute and speak to the commission. Once called on by the chair, you will be asked to unmute and speak to the commission. The commission may ask additional questions of the individual providing comments or staff. We will now begin with city staff presentation.
Hi, thank you for that. Um, good evening. I'm Jean-Sarah Biggs. I'm the Transportation Planning Division Manager in the Community Development Department. Um, it's nice to join you tonight. Um, I'm here to talk about the Beaverton Downtown Loop, and there's some slides that will pull up here in a second um that staff uh behind the scenes will run for me. Um, but we've been uh going through a planning process for this uh the Beaverton Downtown Loop. We're nearing the end of that process. And we just wanted to check in with you um to share the work that we've done. Um, this is a work session, so there's no action for you to take at this um at this time. Um, so before I start, I always just like to ask, um, how many of you have seen a presentation about the loop before? You or or I'm even just gonna say you've heard about, just do a quick, okay, yes. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, terrific. Um, so we're in our final round of community engagement um to gather comments on the project's preferred alternative. That's our conceptual design that our project team has developed that's um based on stakeholder input from early twenty twenty two. And then once we have this concept plan and um for the proposed changes in place, that really sets the stage for our next steps. Um, so the loop, what is the loop? Um, it's a um really transformative vision to link Old Town and Beaverton Central with transportation investments on Hall Boulevard, Watson Avenue and Fifth Street, um all to support a vibrant and inclusive downtown. We're reimagining our streets and sidewalks to create um really an exciting pedestrian experience. And that's something that city council has consistently requested um of the team when they've talked with us about their desires for the loop. So I'm going to ask, are the slides ready?
Yes, they are. I'll pull them up here in just a second.
Thanks.
Did I just lose them?
We're not seeing them, Stephen.
Oh, hold on one second.
That's okay.
Sorry, technical difficulty.
No worries. Thank you all for your patience. I'm at home with one laptop screen, so I always need someone behind the scenes to run the slide so I can read my notes and see you. Here we go. Terrific. Thank you. You can go to the next slide. Terrific. Okay, so let's start here. Um, the preferred alternative I'm going to talk about with you all tonight is based on our guiding principle of designing streets for people. Um, it's about putting pedestrians first with sidewalks that are spacious and gracious, safe and universally accessible. It's about separating people biking from motor vehicles with continuous protected bike lanes. It's about improving the experience for people riding transit with better bus stops. It's about creating placemaking opportunities. And for people who come downtown by car for shopping or dining or services, the loop creates a great experience outdoors and on foot um that supports what we call the Park Once and Walk Model. Let's go to the next slide. Terrific. Great. Um, so at the very beginning of our planning process, we reached out to people and here are some of the key things that we heard very consistently. Um, that uh the Hall and Watson couplet um places along the route are just not very interesting or even comfortable. Um, crossing those major intersections at Canyon and Farmington um and at the railroad tracks um can be a little scary. Um, in uh many places, it feels unsafe or it's just uncomfortable for people with disabilities. Um, driving conditions really just sort of make it unsafe for everyone. And that um for those people who are cyclists, even those um strong and and confident cyclists, um there are places where it just doesn't feel like it's a safe place for them as well. So just sort of to summarize all this, um the Hall and Watson couplet really is a challenge, um a challenging place for everyone using it. So let's go to the next slide. Okay, so before we dive into the changes that we're proposing, let's just first take a look at the existing roadway on Hall and Watson. Um, the right of way um on both streets is limited. It's typically sixty feet wide. We have nine foot sidewalks with street trees and ornamental street lighting on both sides. We have a six foot painted bike lane. We have two eleven foot travel lanes and two seven foot parking lanes. So to make space for the wider sidewalks and protected bike lanes, the preferred alternative includes several key changes to the street skates. Um, and that includes removing the on-street parking either on one side or both sides. Um, planting new street trees and replacing our tree canopy as we create these new wider sidewalk accessible spaces. Um, consolidating driveways where we're where we're able to to reduce those conflicts between people biking and walking and people driving cars entering um in and out of driveways, um adding traffic signals to provide better clarity between travel modes at intersections. And also using those um signals to help us slow traffic and reach target speeds of twenty miles an hour. Um, and then additionally, there's also places where um acquiring property for additional right of way. Um, sometimes it slivers at the back of the sidewalk. Sometimes it's three feet along an entire frontage through redevelopment. Um, that will allow us to have that space to build those wider sidewalks. So let's go to the next slide. On my side, good news. Great. So um in winter twenty twenty two, we reached out to the community with our preliminary design alternatives, and these were the series of potential solutions for the loop. Um, and we asked for feedback. So we had hundreds of community members and visitors and stakeholders weigh in on those options. Um, some um were our community advisory committee, a group of twenty-two people. Um, they dedicated significant time to study the conditions, learn about the technical constraints, and really weigh the balance of needs for um the diversity of people that require access to downtown sidewalks and transportation. Um, other people heard short presentations of the options, and they engaged in just sort of brief conversations with staff. And then we also had an online survey. Um, and we heard from three hundred and twenty-one individuals. Um, they advocated for their interests. They provided their insights for how the design options um might be received by the community at large. Okay, so let's go to the next. Okay, so with all of that feedback, we developed this preferred alternative I'm going to share with you. Um, but let's just take a quick moment to orient you to this map of the loop area because we're going to refer back to it in the show. So Hall and Watson through downtown, there are one-way couplet north and south. Um, that will remain. Um, at the north end of the loop is Crescent Street. That's where we have the front door to the research. And at the south end is Fifth Street where we have City Park and the City Library. And in the middle are Canyon Road and Farmington Road and the Railroad. Um, again, all three of those um quarters are frequently cited by community members as barriers to walking and biking in our downtown. Um, the preferred alternative is de- is defined by these three segments that you see highlighted in the green boxes. All three um create great pedestrian experiences throughout the loop. So let's go ahead and walk through them. Go to the next slide. Okay, so this middle section, we call the promenade, extends, um it extends from Milliken Way down to Second. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, here you'll see that we have um twelve-foot sidewalks on one side of the street and eighteen-foot wide sidewalks on the opposite side. Um, you'll also see that we have an eight-foot wide raised um bike lane. We call that a cycle track. And then we have two eleven-foot travel lanes. Okay, let's go to the next. So what does that look like at the street level and how might we use that space? Um, with these eighteen-foot wide sidewalks, we can create um places to gather, meet friends, enjoy downtown, right? Have that sort of a lively street scape um we'd like to see. Um, we can also just better support business activity by having space for A-boards and store displays, cafe tables, bike racks, all of those pieces. Um, and then we can also ensure an accessible uh accessible route by maintaining that clear pedestrian through zone, that space that you see labeled there in the middle of the sidewalk. Okay, let's go to the next slide. So here we are at First and Watson, and on the left, um you'll see a photo of the existing conditions there today. And on the right, um you get a sense of the space that's created in that eighteen-foot wide sidewalk. And then if you look um on the sort of the right side of that image, you can also see the cycle track on the opposite side of the street and that new traffic signal um at First and Watson. Let's go to the next. So one of the things we heard from our community advisory committee is that really there is no loop without addressing the crossings at Canyon and at Farmington. Um, so how do we make those um major crossings more comfortable and safer? Um, and that's what you're seeing here in this image on the right. Um, we do this by installing high visibility crosswalks, those ladder bar style. Um, and then green cross bike markings through the intersection. Um, both of those help make people walking and biking just more visible to motorists. Um, and then we also have the ability to um uh time traffic signals with a tool we call leading pedestrian intervals. That's when the walk sign goes on before the green light so that pedestrians have a head start crossing the street and are more visible to people driving as they're moving through the intersections. That's a safety benefit. And then another um way we can improve safety is um in in this instance here um on the approach um is to remove the third travel lane. Um, today, there's actually three travel lanes on that approach. Um, and that's so that we only have one lane of vehicles turning left or turning right into the crosswalks at these locations. And then it also just creates the space for the bike lane that just doesn't exist today. Okay, let's go to the next slide. So here we are just down the road at Hall and Canyon. And again, um the plan proposes using those pavement markings to highlight the space for people walking and biking, giving priority to pedestrians with that head start when they cross, um removing the third travel lane to create space for bikes that just doesn't exist today. And then here at this location, um we're looking at removing that right turn slip lane on the southeast corner of the intersection so that cars turning from Hall onto Canyon have to make that turn much slower than they do today. Okay, let's go to the next slide. So let's move to the Old Town portion. Let's go to the next. So here's our cross section. It's a little bit different from the promenade in that you'll see the parking um the parking lane return on one side of the street. Um, so here you'll see we have twelve-foot sidewalks on both sides, a seven-foot cycle track, two eleven-foot travel lanes, and then this seven-foot flex zone, and I'll just explain what that means in a minute. Let's go to the next. Okay, now here's an image of the twelve-foot sidewalk adjacent to that seven-foot cycle track. So here you can see how the sidewalk space for people walking is separated from the cycle track by that furnishing zone with its street trees and other site furnishings, um including things like pedestrian scale, pedestrian scale streetlights and bike racks. Um, sort of these visual and tactile cues help separate the space between these modes. Okay, let's go to the next. And then um again, here in Old Town, here's another image of that twelve-foot sidewalk. Here it's adjacent to that flex you zone. Um, you can see, you know, maybe there's a um space for parked cars. Um, but there might also be space for outdoor dining, you know, ala um open air Beaverton um in that flex zone space. Let's go to the next. Okay, so um as we move forward with the loop, um we can have more conversations about how we manage that space at the curb for a number of uses that serve our residents and the business community. And that's what that's the space of sort of calling this, um not just a sort of parking spaces, but really a flexible use zone. Um, so this doesn't have to just be parking for cars. It can be used for on-street bike parking, truck loading, outdoor dining, and even sort of very short-term spaces for um ride sharing and food delivery. Um, the other thing to think about too is how the loop really leverages sort of the hundreds of on-street parking spots in the blocks around the loop to support the business activity and those who are driving downtown. Let's go to the next. So I mentioned earlier that the preferred alternative includes planting new street trees and replacing our tree canopy as we create these new wider sidewalk spaces. So the image on the left shows how the existing street trees narrow, are already narrow sidewalks even more, um barely meeting the required sidewalk widths on much of Hall and Watson. Um, as we move into the next stage of the project, we'll work with the city arborist to identify several species of trees that work well in the main street environment and also that are resilient and adaptable to climate change. Um, and then I also just want to point out, there are some trees that will stay. This image on the right um shows the trees that are alongside um City Park, the City Library and the library lot, right, where we have the farmer's market. You can see that here. Um, here we're proposing really minimal alterations to the sidewalks. These sidewalks were built more recently and they serve the adjacent uses well. Okay, let's go to the next. Okay, here's the last stretch in Beaverton Central. Let's go to the next slide. So here's our cross section. You can see those twelve-foot sidewalks on both sides, a seven-foot protected um bike facility, two eleven-foot travel lanes and that seven-foot flex zone. Um, but it's also in this section where you can see the potential for creating fifteen-foot wide sidewalks by securing an additional three feet of right of way, um likely through redevelopment. Um, that concept of dedicating right way really can apply to any frontage on the loop that has twelve-foot sidewalks. Um, but it's really here in Beaverton Central where we have um parking lots fronting Hall and Watson um almost along the entire stretch, not existing buildings, um where there's really obvious potential for this to happen. Okay, let's go to the next. Okay, so um I just have a few more slides and then we'll get to your questions. Um, so here's a little bit more about where we are in our process. Um, March and April are busy with engagement activities to inform the community and gather feedback, my visit here with all of you tonight. Um, and then um we'll um on May second, I'm sorry, back up. March twenty-first, that was just a few weeks ago, we had a joint city council bureau work session. They heard a presentation um almost very similar to this. Um, so gathered their feedback there. And then on May second, city council will consider adopting the plan through city council action. Um, so as I said earlier, completing this planning phase with this high-level concept for the proposed changes really sets the stage for our next steps. Let's go to the next slide. Um, so there's some good news to celebrate. Um, you may have heard about this, but um the city had some great success last year in securing two million dollars in federal grant funding um from the United States Department of Transportation um that will support preliminary design. And then um another four million in federal funds. Um, these two together really put us on a path to begin project development and preliminary design next year. And um construction work on um a phase one or a demonstration project can follow. Let's go to the next slide. Um, I also just want to share that there's still a lot of decisions to come in this next phase of project development and preliminary design to continue to refine the plan and our implementation strategy. That last bullet around community engagement um is really critical. Um, that will continue as we move forward in our work. And I think I'm at the end. Yes. So. Thank you so much for your time. I'm ready for your questions.
Great. Um, do we have any commissioners that want to make comments, ask questions? Yeah, Commissioner Ellis got his hand up first.
Um, yeah, so big, 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 big fan of the concept and um I think that a like a a fortunate side effect to the unfortunate pandemic is that Beaverton inherited so many great restaurants and businesses that we're looking to either start up or leave Portland or something like that. And so I love that area downtown. Um, one thing as we're looking at, you know, you mentioned the hundreds of parking spots that are in the area that even though this plan will kind of necessarily remove some street parking, that we have a really sharp eye on like really how many of those extra parking spots are there? How many are at risk of of being lost over time now that there won't be minimum parking requirements in the in the building code? Because if we want to keep that area like a buzz and keep attracting those kinds of businesses, the folks who you the folks who you need to attract down there, just to be very practical and realistic about this and say it aloud, are the folks with the disposable income to come spend the evening at Ex Novo and Loyal Legion. So you need people who want to come down Murray and Hall from from the Cooper Mountain area, right? Like that's, that's who you need. And so they they do need accessible parking somewhere in the loop area um to to start the journey of walking around. And uh over time, if we're relying on those hundreds of excellent parking spaces, those might go away unless there's a specific effort to maintain uh one or more central spots that people can park. And and I'm not necessarily not necessarily advocating for giant garages or whatever, but I'm just wanting to make sure that that's something we're thinking about.
Terrific. I appreciate that comment. There's a larger effort around parking in our downtown. Through our downtown parking management and action plan, it's both looking at the off-street parking and the on-street parking. We're taking small steps. I am not the right person to speak to it. So I'm going to say a little bit and then maybe we can have some follow-up. Later on. But we are in the process of starting to actually enforce the time zones on our parking downtown. In a much more I'll just say we're enforcement has not been really something that's been a priority, but we now have that resource available. So I think even just thinking about how we manage that space and having turnover. That's one of the recommendations that came out of that downtown parking management and action plan. And there's definitely more things to do. So I think you're right. In, in your comments about thinking about keeping an eye on it and how do we manage that space? How do we make it still continue to work for all the demands that are on it? So there is a little bit of a sort of a watchful eye. I'll, I'll call it that to say. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Sorry, couldn't find my unmute button. Commissioner Glenn McEl.
Great presentation. Thank you so much for this. I think it will be fantastic to get the traffic slowed down a little bit. And to make it more comfortable and safe for pedestrians in this area. In particular, I hear a street racing going up and up Watson and down Hall every Friday and Saturday night. And hopefully these changes will kind of slow some of that from happening or prevent that from happening. Can you talk a little bit more about the concept of changing the light for pedestrians to green before the vehicles? Cause that made me a little bit nervous just knowing how many people run red lights nowadays. If that pedestrian light turns green and people head out into the crosswalk. Doesn't that present more of a safety hazard with people running red lights?
Yeah, so it's actually, it's a, it's a well documented, I'm going to say technical term, counter safety measure. As a transportation safety solution. So the idea is that okay, picture yourself, you're waiting. I'm going to sort of describe it. You're waiting for the walk signal. And you're waiting for the walk signal. The cars that are walking, that are, that are moving parallel with you. They're also, they have a red light. So the walk signal goes on a few seconds before the, the cars, the people waiting to get their green light. So that you're, as a pedestrian, you're out in the intersection, you're more visible. You've already started your crossing across the street. Red light running happens not from the people waiting for the, waiting at the red light. It's the people going across. So there's, it's a tool that's been used elsewhere. I, I hear your concern. Your concern that pedestrian might go out and then someone might still be running that red light. So that's, it's helpful feedback to, to have. I haven't heard that question come up before. So, you know, I, I, yeah, it's something we've seen in other cities, so.
Yeah, I would just hope that the traffic engineer that makes those changes also adjusts the timing for the light on the other side. So that there's a delay because when I'm driving and I'm at a red light, I never shoot right out. When it turns green, because I know there's a good chance someone's getting around the light. So just timing that would be important. And then my other comment would be about the street trees. You mentioned that some of the trees will be removed and replaced with other species because they're kind of encroaching on the sidewalk that we want to make much wider. And so I guess my feedback would be maybe look at the health of the tree and whether or not that existing tree could be incorporated into the larger sidewalk. Because I don't think we necessarily need a 12 foot sidewalk the whole length. Maybe there could be some you know, more narrow sections where we have seating integrated into the sidewalk and then wider sections. I think kind of incorporating those agusting trees. Might be better than just removing them or shifting them over so we can have a straight path. I think sometimes having some curving and some weaving can make a sidewalk more interesting. So that was my other comment.
Terrific. Thank you for that. Can I go back? One thing I forgot to mention on the traffic signal. The leading pedestrian intervals are something actually that ODOT has been implementing on a number of their corridors around the state. So I think hearing your comment is something that we can sort of follow up more and just see what they're seeing and what reports they're hearing from people as they're using them. So it's not a new, I think it's more of a new thing to Beaverton. It's not a new thing to other cities and other places. So, yeah. Great. Yeah.
Do any other commissioners have comments or questions? Commissioner Lawler?
Thank you. I think the Loop Project is, will be a wonderful addition to the city and and I just hope that all of the other bike paths that work their way out into all of our neighborhoods. Logically then integrate into this Loop System because I think it'll be a, a very important component. From the overall, you know, bike plan for the, for the city. But anyway. And it made me think about, you know, maybe this is just something that'll come in a subsequent stage, but it just, I also think since we're going to be, well, feeding in this Loop Project feeds in the natural transit hubs that come, that enter into the city from all over the region, you know, light rail and the bus routes that are on Canyon and Farmington. It would be kind of nice to have kind of gate, those kind of treated like gateway areas for folks entering. And again, because of the parking situation. I think that this plan will kind of naturally kind of feed into having more transit access into our central city. So kind of encouraging that by, you know, making it attractive or an entry point or something I think would, would be a good emphasis. At some point in implementation of this. And then I was also reading your plan. I wasn't quite sure. And so this is a question. What is a railroad quiet zone?
Oh, yeah. A railroad quiet zone is where at a railroad crossing. So picture, you know, Hall and Watson where it crosses. It's, it's both, it's a process to actually get one in place and then it's an official sort of order that's placed over the trains as they operate through those intersections. So by adding safety investments at an individual crossing or in a series of crossings. There's a process you go through with the states, the railroad and federal railroad administration. Through a consultation where you define a level of safety investment that then with those in place. The railroad engineers, they don't have to sound their horns through the crossings. So I didn't really touch on it in here, but there's more work that we'll be doing as we work on that with our federal funds. But as we've grown our downtown, we have more people living downtown. It's the, the benefit of having that quiet zone in place really is a huge livability benefit. It'll help make our downtown more attractive. The trains today, the Portland and Western trains, they run four times a day during the daytime and four times at nighttime. Through those crossings. And when I present and when I've had this topic come up, I had people say, I can hear it from my house, you know, however far away they live. Right? Everyone knows about the sounds of the trains. It's something that council, city council has had interest in for many years. We have pursued funds in the past to build those improvements, but haven't had success. This first step of just even getting a little bit more definition on the design of what those improvements would be. Is really a good first step and then that'll set us up well for being able to go after other grant funding. In the hopes that we can, can implement that quiet zone.
Okay, I think it's a, be a wonderful addition because it's also seems like if we want to promote outdoor dining and as such, nothing is more startling than having a train whistle come by. Trying to eat your lunch. Okay.
Yeah, they're loud. They're very loud.
I can hear it from my house. Okay. That I, I really like the idea of separating bicycles from cars, even if it's just by a little bit of a height differential because I don't know. I, I think that dissuades a lot of folks from bicycling is, is being stemming a very small space immediately adjacent to cars. And so just a little bit of separation, I think is a, is a valued part of this plan. So that's just my comment. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Winter, did I see your hand go up at some point?
You did, and I was just going to pile on on the more space the bicyclists have, safer it is and the more likely we'll have more people biking. To summarize what I was going to say. As someone who's been run off the road more than once.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah. Any other comments from commissioners? I only had one. You said you were going to be removing and replacing trees. Commissioner McCann mentioned in a previous hearing about parking. That Seattle had done some research and has implemented new standards for urban street trees and how they are planted in the to keep the root systems from disrupting the sidewalks. So you might look into that or reach out to Commissioner McCann and ask her for information.
Or I should say this, I can ask her work colleagues who are our prime consultants on the plan. There you go. So, but yes, I, I appreciate that. It's always good to see what other cities are doing. I will tell you that I, I think our city arborist is a really engaged in his work and wants to like continue to move Beaverton forward. So I appreciate that. I'll pass that along. Yeah.
Yeah, because even around the round with the trees that aren't that old, the, they're already disrupting the sidewalks. So. Okay, well, if there are no more comments or questions from commissioners. We can move on to the public comment portion. And a reminder, comments will be limited to five minutes. For those viewing Zoom webinar. Please communicate using your raised hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press nine to alert the chair you would like to speak. Let's see if we have anybody even left. We do have requests for comments. BH. Please go ahead and unmute yourself and.
Yeah, hi, am I unmuted?
Yep, you sure?
Okay, yeah, hi. Grant here. Yeah, I live in central Beaverton. In one of the apartments along Lombard. I was curious if there was any plans or ability to slow the traffic on Canyon or Farmington. Like in a east to west perspective. I just know it's like walking across from, from here, like, like south of Farmington up to like the central area. It's really miserable even waiting on that crosswalk. Right now, just with the speed of cars as they go, as they go past. So I was wondering if that kind of thing was possible, whether it's actually slowing, you know, like the the, the traffic, the, the speed limits or even medians or something to sort of cause a natural slow of traffic in that area. The second thing was if there has been any like studies or we're looking into how traffic might be affected outside the loop, such as on Lombard. I know like there's a lot of benefits that are going to be going into Hall and Watson. I'm wondering if any spillover or if there could be any negative effects on some of the areas outside the loop. Lombard's not the best for walking right now, but the sidewalks are a bit wider than, than some areas. So I was just wondering if there's any thought put into that yet.
Thanks for those questions. So I'll do your first one, slowing, slowing traffic on Canyon and Farmington. That isn't the, the focus of this project, obviously, as you've heard through my presentation. However, the, as we look at the changes at those intersections at both of those. I think it does open up the possibility for us to think about. Are there other modifications we can make at least at those intersections or through the traffic signal timing that might help with that? I know on Canyon where we have the center turn lane where you actually can't take a turn at those, at the signals. So on the west side of Watson and the east side of Hall. We're looking to, through this plan, we're, we're proposing to put small median islands there. Just to help kind of create another sort of signal that you're in our downtown at this intersection. So that's just sort of a, a small thing. But in terms of sort of a bigger look at slowing traffic on those streets, that's just not part of this project. And then studies on how traffic might be affected outside the loop, like on Lombard. So in this next phase of the project. There's more traffic analysis that we'll be doing. We haven't, we, we, our, our analysis has, our analysis has really been on the existing conditions of the, the couplet today. As well as just thinking a little bit about the operations at the intersections and the changes that we're proposing. We'll be doing some more traffic analysis to better understand what those changes, what the effects are of the changes that we're proposing. For sure, we definitely want to understand how we can use signal timing to help manage that, the, those speeds to get that target speed of 20 miles an hour. Also to understand what the changes do to transit travel times for the TriMet line 76 that goes north and south. It turns on Canyon, goes to the Beaverton Transit Center, goes to and from the Beaverton Transit Center. That's going to be really important to us and to TriMet. They're a partner in the project. And then through that analysis, we'll, we'll be taking a bit of a perspective to understand. As you're asking sort of what might that do to, to traffic elsewhere in our downtown. I think Lombard's an important one. We think about sort of that nor, it's a parallel north-south route. So I think you're, you're asking a question. There's more traffic analysis to come. So we'll be back and sharing that with the community as we do, as we move the project forward.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
And then China, I think, or Jean, I think at the URAK presentation, I think you mentioned at Farmington and Watson. You're re, you're shifting the crossing on the one side to at least make that shorter. Slightly more inviting.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Um, yeah, on that west leg, it's a very long crossing to go from the railroad crossing to Ex Novo. If you can picture that crossing, that's probably maybe the longest one in the whole project area because of that angle. It's a, it's a tough, and I'll just say that it's a tough intersection to figure out what more can we do? You know, we have some, that's right at the, at the entry of our that stretch of Old Town through there with those wonderful buildings, right? That kind of defined Beaverton so well. But there's not, there's the space in the right of way to work, to work within. That makes it challenging.
Okay. There is no other public comments. Commissioner Winter?
I have one more question about the railroads quiet. Is that 24 hours a day or is there targeted time?
Yeah, I, I should say more. It, once it's in place, it, it is 24 hours a day. I should also say it does not prohibit an engineer from sounding the horn. If they see something. They can sound their horn. So it does not prevent them doing that, but it is something that would be in place for, for 24 hours a day. That's the intent.
I understand that the railroads are well, let's just say that they've been in place for a lot longer than we've been here and they're going to continue to be a lot longer than we're going to be here. And so they have a very parochial way of looking at things, but at 11:30 at night when I'm trying to go to sleep and the train goes through Beaverton and I'm a mile away, it seems kind of crazy that I can hear that thing like it's right next door.
Yeah, sound travels so much further at night, right? And that's the complaint. That's what we want to address. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Right. Right, um, so does staff or the city attorney have any final comments?
I have no final comments, Chair and Commissioners.
Okay. Well, with no further comments, we have one last order of business this evening. Which is the meeting minutes. Um, for February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve the minutes for February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two as submitted.
Uh, do we have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll probably do a vote by roll call because we have some people here who aren't even present. Um, Commissioner Lawler.
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis.
Uh, aye.
Aye, Commissioner Glenn McEl.
Aye.
Commissioner Call.
Aye.
Commissioner Winter.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So motion passes unanimously. Um, so with that, we are adjourned at eight seventeen PM. Thanks for all your comments tonight, you guys.
Night.